Good evening. Welcome to the Cape Charles Town Council Regular Meeting, March the 17th, 2022. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. And can I get a roll call?
Buckholz is present.
Holloway present.
Bennett present.
O'Brien present.
Grossman present.
Fulmer present.
Let it be known we've established a quorum. Can everybody rise for a moment of silence and applaud your lead.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3A, Arbor Day 2022 proclamation. We're just proclaiming or? Have somebody from Tree Foundation, the Tree Board want to get up and say a few words?
So I'm Phil Getkin with the Tree Advisory Board for Cape Charles. Jane McKinley is also here.
Facebook can hear you.
Hello. I'm Phil Getkin. I live at 602 Jefferson Avenue. I'm also a member of the Cape Charles Tree Advisory Board. Jane McKinley is another member on the board with us. And our mission is to try to make Cape Charles a more tree-friendly place. And so every year, we have tried to, with Mr. Mayor, has put together a resolution in honor of Arbor Day, which we'll be celebrating on April 30th of this year. And I'll just throw out there that the Tree Advisory Board is getting a little more and more involved all the time. One of the things we're going to be doing, we're working with the town Public Works on March 26th, and we're going to be pruning some of the many, many crepe myrtles that we have here in town. And we're going to focus right off the bat on the trees along Stone Road, on both sides of the road going out towards 13. So if you see anybody out there, just wave to them, say hi. But anyhow, that's all.
Thank you for that. Yep, appreciate it. Okay, so proclamation 2022-03-17A. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution of combating climate change and reducing the erosion of our precious topsoils by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating temperatures, cleaning the air, producing living, giving oxygen, and providing habitat for the wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Cape Charles is the first designated Tree City USA community in Northampton County, Virginia. Now, therefore be proclaimed that Cape Charles Town Council hereby designates April 30th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the town of Cape Charles, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and supports the efforts to protect their trees and their woodlands. Further, urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future, this and future generations. I guess I need a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt the proclamation. That's ready.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's adopted on this day, March the 17th, 2022. Okay, up next is National Library Week proclamation. Do you have anybody who wants to speak on that?
Yep.
Nope, okay. Proclamation 2022-03-17B, National Library Week, April 3rd through tonight, 2022. Connect with your library. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. Whereas libraries connect people to technology, provide access to the broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for access and education and employment opportunities. Whereas libraries are opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and classes in addition to books. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas in a time of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continue to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the Cape Charles Town Council hereby designates April 3rd through tonight, 2022, as National Library Week, and encourages all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt the proclamation. That's ready.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's adopted by on this day, March 17th, 2022. Okay, up next, proclamation honoring librarian Anne Rutledge's retirement. Before I get into saying this, I can say Anne started working for the town right before me. And what she did with the little library that started here to where it's at now is quite amazing. So congratulations to Anne on her retirement. So proclamation 2022-03-17C honoring Anne Rutledge on her retirement. Whereas Anne Rutledge will be retiring from the town of Cape Charles on April 1st, 2022. Whereas Anne has served the town and the community with distinction since April 2002 as librarian of Cape Charles Memorial Library. And whereas Anne has developed numerous programs benefiting the children and youth living in the town and surrounding areas of Northampton County. And whereas Anne has continuously strived to leverage the library as a means to encourage community engagement and inclusion. And whereas Anne has represented the town of Cape Charles on Eastern Shore Public Library Board of Trustees. And whereas Anne has consistently served as, served the residents of the town in Northampton County with dedication and innovation throughout her tenure. And whereas Anne will be missed both professionally and as a friend. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the Cape Charles Town Council hereby extends our sincere appreciation for Anne Rutledge's contributions to the town and our community, and offers her best wishes for a long and happy retirement as she journeys into the next phase of her life. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt the proclamation. That's ready.
Scott Aggett.
Anybody want to say anything?
I think the proclamation says it well. And you started it off from going from the little library that could to filling the new library with just such joy and education. She's done a great job. We will miss her.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, public comments, three minutes per speaker. Mr. Buckholz?
Timer? Haven't missed yet. You don't even have to tell me. See, he just said I'll give him a minute, like, all the time.
Richard Berger?
Good evening, Town Council, Town staff, and fellow citizens. I'm Richard Berger, speaking tonight on behalf of the Cape Charles Memorial Library Board of Trustees. The council has just adopted two proclamations, one acknowledging National Library Week and the other honoring Anne Rutledge's retirement. As we recognize the importance of public libraries as institutions, we cannot neglect the importance of the librarians who make the operation of these libraries possible. I would therefore like to take a moment to honor Ms. Anne Rutledge, our town librarian, who will be retiring in two weeks after 20 years of service to the Cape Charles community. Through Anne's tireless efforts over the past 20 years, our little town library has become, first and foremost, a place to get books, books that entertain, educate, and inspire; an accessible and inclusive center of our community; a technology hub and training center for citizens who lack access to or acknowledge of broadband internet and computers, providing a portal to educational and employment opportunities otherwise unavailable; an access point for multimedia content, CDs, DVDs, audiobooks. Libraries are about so much more than just paper books in the 21st century; a hub for special programming and activities especially for, but not limited to, our children. Witness the nature programs in conjunction with Kiptop Peak State Park, the craft events and activity bags, storytimes for children, guest speakers and entertainers, and the townwide reads; a de facto visitors' center providing a variety of information about our town to countless drop-in guests from out of town; a repository for the documentation of the history of Cape Charles and Northampton County; a welcoming place trusted and treasured by all members of our community; and like all fine libraries, a true cornerstone of American democracy, promoting the free exchange of ideas and information for all. On behalf of the Cape Charles Memorial Library Board of Trustees, I want to thank Anne for her service and her leadership in building, growing, and maintaining our Cape Charles Memorial Library as a center of our town's cultural, historical, and informational life. Her work has had a profound impact on our town and on the lives of our citizens. Thank you.
Very well. So, thank you.
Diane Davis?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, clerk, town manager. I am Diane Davis of 601 Jefferson Avenue, Cape Charles resident. This evening, I just have a few concerns. As you remember, I have been asking about a basketball court in the park, even though some felt that it should be located over the hump. Are we against having people older than 12 playing in the park other than the students at Cape Charles Christian School? I was surprised when the community survey came out, and a question was on it about placing the basketball court south of Ray Fields. I could not understand why it was mentioned south of Ray Fields. And I'm wondering, do we really own the property south of Ray Fields? I don't know. Regardless, it should be in the park. Also, at one of our meetings, I turned in a petition to you that included all nationalities, ages 6 to 70-plus, the Cape Charles Christian School, and the Coast Guard that were interested in the basketball court in the park. Did you even look at that petition that I turned in, or is it that petitions are just not that important? Also, I did not understand why the basketball court was listed in the community survey. When it was decided to put a mini golf course off of Stone Road, if that is true, I do not remember a survey for that. When it was decided to make the path for the golf carts to go to the Cape Charles Brewery, I do not remember a survey for that either. 15 to 20 years ago, we had a few problems on the court. But the people who did that negativity out there did not mention other things that happened in the town. Since that time that those incidents happened, we've had a basketball court, and it was there until the town sold the old school. We also had a recreation director. Now, today we have the golf carts that are around. Are you aware of the accidents that have happened as a result of some of those have incurred emergency injuries where people have had to go to the emergency rooms that happened? People being side swiped, cars being side swiped, in addition to those driving under the influence. You should be concerned about all activities that happen in our town, not just things that you have been told to sway your thinking. I would just like for you to be honest and just state that activities in the park for persons 12 and older is not just one of your priorities. If it is an activity, is it just an activity that you like, that you would like to see in the park, which loses our kids, that I'm concerned about? At this time, I would say to you, may God bless each of you as you make your decisions to benefit all mankind, in addition to friends that you have and what they're interested in. May God bless each of you.
Okay, Lorraine Huckler?
Thank you. I'll be speaking, I'll be speaking to the town priorities. I just have a few comments and questions.
Please state your name.
Lorraine Huckler. I live in Exmoor, but I have been a landlord here of affordable apartments for 20 years, 20-plus. My first question is really about the preparation of the fiscal year 2023 budget. And at the last town council meeting, I learned that the timeline for the current phase of the PPA process would likely last for several months, which means that we're going to fall into 2023, probably by the time any decision is made. My question is simple. Is the town council going to create two budgets for a decision being made in the 2023 fiscal year, one based on keeping the plants and one based on selling the plants and receiving a large amount of revenue? That kind of scenario planning is very common. My second question is also about the plants, about the compelling reasons. There may be compelling reasons, but I want to talk about one of them. They've talked about reduction in rates and better quality of water and economies of scales. Those are the ones that rise to the top of my list. But there's this problem about saving money is probably the most important issue to rate payers. But the only rate projections we've seen are from the PPEA consultant, NewGen. And they're not actually accurate. Their projections are unvalidated because the PPEA consultant doesn't set the rates, Virginia American Water doesn't set the rates, the SCC and the rate consolidation law sets the rates. And so far, the town hasn't released the budget information, the budget forecast used by NewGen for that 10-year projection of rates for the status quo and their projections data for rates for VAW. VAW has given fairly vague assurances about what happens to the rates. They said they'll be lower, but they have a 28% rate increase in front of the SCC right now, the largest in the last 20 years that they've asked for. They don't get all, they don't get the amount they ask for, but it is the largest amount they've ever requested. Question is, will the town release the data for the projections, the budget? You have a five-year budget plan, and obviously, it's a 10-year budget that was shown, or 10-year projection in the town hall data. So there's got to be some budget information that supported that. I hope that it can be released without restriction. My last few questions about ARPA funding, which is on the town priority. That's the American Rescue Act Plan Act. It's COVID funding. And the town received funds, and they've spent some for essential workers. Although I understand that workers that, some workers were not included, like workers at the water and waste plant, wastewater plants, even though other municipalities like Hampton Roads did include those employees. But does the town know that those funds can be spent for infrastructure, for water and wastewater? How much money is available? I'd be interested.
Abigail Courtney?
Hello. My name is Abigail Courtney. I reside at 22076 Ferlinda Landing North in Cape Charles. Together with my twin sister, we own and operate Seagrass Floral at 235 Mason Avenue. We have worked hard to build our small business and are very proud of what we've been able to achieve for both locals and tourists, providing floral and healing services to individuals. I am here in support of a zoning variance that we hope we can prioritize and have taken care of sooner than normal protocol. While we realize these are rules and regulations for procedures on these types of requests, the business owners who are on this strip will feel an immediate hardship in how they deal with waste management if there is not a simple and quick resolution. I appreciate your time and consideration on this matter. Thank you.
David Gamino?
Good evening, members of the town council, Mr. Mayor, Town Manager, Zoning Administrator. My name is-
I'm going to need to speak into the microphone.
Okay. My name is David Gamino, and my wife Catherine and I own the Hotel Cape Charles. I'm here tonight to address council regarding my effort to resolve an ongoing zoning violation on the vacant lot at 238 Randolph Avenue. Before we use a resolution of intent to consider a change to the zoning map in the C1 district, this is my proposal to change the zoning of the vacant lot at 238 Randolph from R1 to C1 with strict limitations on any future commercial activity. In essence, what I'm seeking to do is codify the historic activity that's occurred on that lot and the current activity that has occurred on that lot since we opened in 2012. The staff report before you sets forth a prospective schedule that concludes at the earliest on August 18th, 2022, and the latest possibly on April 5th, 2023. And I realize those are set by the Virginia Code. However, I'm asking council to set forth an expedited schedule rather than that proposed in your staff report. The Code of Virginia allows town council to shorten the timeframe allotted to the Planning Commission for its review and recommendation. This process can be further expedited by the request, again, of town council to hold a joint Planning Commission and Town Council public hearing on the proposed amendment. And I seek an expedited schedule for two reasons. First, and most importantly, the hotel faces possible sanctions because of this zoning violation and, you know, due to the enforcement of it. And the commercial activity, which is the subject of the violation, is critical to the hotel's operations, along with several other businesses on Mason Avenue. If the hotel's operations can't continue due to the enforcement sanctions, we need to pause reservations and let guests know that. It's critical, and it's weighing on us. Second, I would submit that the separate public hearings that are normally called for and with these zoning amendments would be redundant and unnecessary when you're talking about a rezoning that's limited to this one single parcel. One joint public hearing would allow full consideration of the facts and support of the amendment, as well as any opposition to be fully heard. If during those hearings, the public hearings, town council believes additional restrictions or definitions are necessary, the Code of Virginia allows, at those hearings, at that public hearing, allows council to accept amended proffers once the public hearing has begun. In other words, during that public hearing that we would have, there could be additional conditions. If people come up and the council decides, well, you know what, maybe we need to limit this or limit that, we could do it during that hearing if they were in writing and were accepted by the applicant, which would be me. I believe that the-
That's time, Mr.-
All right, well, the last thing I'd like to say is with respect to the zoning administrator in there, and I just would like to say, although I disagree with the zoning administrator's posture regarding this rezoning and the enforcement of this violation, very much so, this process has been handled in the utmost professional fashion. I'll say that Ms. Nunez's knowledge of the zoning ordinance, the Code of Virginia, her responsive assistance, and her performance is candidly as good as any municipal professional I've encountered in 25 years of doing development work. And I just wanted to say that because we've been at odds about this entire thing. If, and I would like to, if I could, I mean, I have that statement, and I also have the proposed schedule, and I have a copy for each member.
No one else has signed up, but I do have two emails that were submitted today.
The first email is from Julie Jones, 538 Monroe Avenue. Dear Town Manager Hosey, Mayor Dyes, and Town Council members, please do not sell the library. In a world dominated by electronic devices, children need to know the comfort and joy of having someone read a real book to them and ultimately learning the pleasure, learning the pleasure of selecting and reading a book themselves. Having the library located within easy walking distance of the homes in the historic district is one of the things we love about Cape Charles. We look forward to the day when our little grandson Oliver is old enough for us to take to the library. Oliver already loves books and being read to. We can only imagine the thrill it would be for him to be introduced to the library. Please find another way to finance the town's projects and leave the library where it is for all the children who are in Cape Charles. The second one is from Sam Jones. Says, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council and town manager. First, thank you for your service to the community. It is much appreciated. My name is Sam Jones, and I live at 538 Monroe Avenue. As you consider the issue of accessory dwelling units, to date, the discussion has centered on the use of these units as long-term rentals to address workforce-affordable housing. While an important issue and one that can be addressed through the permitting process, there are other uses of accessory dwelling units that should be considered as well. These include, one, when the main house is a short-term rental and the owner of the property intends to live in the accessory dwelling unit. This can also be addressed through the permitting process. Two, when the owner wants to include the accessory dwelling unit as part of a short-term rental. This can be addressed in the town's annual approval of short-term rentals. Note that the accessory dwelling unit should be included as part of the short-term rental of the main house, so there are not two short-term rentals at the same time address. Three, finally, there is a situation where an owner is not renting either the main house or the accessory dwelling unit at all, but wants to use the accessory dwelling unit to overflow housing, for overflow housing for family and friends who visit. This should be a by-right use of the property and not require a permit since there is no rental involved. All of these uses have become, have come before the Planning Commission as requests for conditional use permits. Addressing these issues in any ordinances or policies you approve will streamline the approval process in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Okay, up next is the consent agenda, and that'll be approval of the agenda format, approval of the amendments, and approval of the January 31st, 2022 financial report. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to reapprove the consent agenda.
Second. You got a motion, you got a second and a discussion?
What the zoning administrator, take this one, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mrs. Nunez.
Good evening. Thank you. Per instruction from the town manager, as well as hearing from the town council, Planning Commission has taken up a review of the accessory dwelling unit sections of our zoning ordinance over the last three months. And so we have now, I think, reached a draft revision to this document that we would like consideration from the town council if we are on the right track to address some of the issues that we have seen over the last two years since it was first adopted. We felt this was important to do with the new ordinance coming online. Did we get it right? Were there some things we need to correct now that we put it in motion for a period of time? And from this process, we did find there were a couple of loopholes that we think should be closed at this point in time. We think it is, it has started to achieve some of the intended purposes, but we still don't feel we have sufficient data, enough history yet, to really see if it's meeting the primary objective of why this ordinance was put in place in the first, in the first instance. And I did want to stress that as we went through the documents, doing the research as well, we noted that this came out of the comprehensive plan documents indicating that you would increase the density allowance in the R1 district to try and address an affordable housing gap in the marketplace. While I know there's much discussion if this is really intended for workforce housing, which is very hard for us to negotiate or compel that to be the primary use of these structures, since we are not focused on collecting or requiring any income established rental prices, we did feel it was important to keep that in mind as we continue to evaluate this ordinance, that we needed to try and create some parameters and retain those parameters, specifically dealing with length of stay, which may help ensure that people know that there's a marketplace out there for longer-term rental capacity within the town limits. So with that said, we provided certain recommendations in our ordinance proposed text changes, excuse me, one of them being proposing to increase the occupancy stay to 60 days, and it's currently in your ordinance at a 30-day requirement minimum. And so I just wanted to point that out as one of the significant changes. We have made some other changes in this document, including moving away from a conditional use permit process being the requirement to obtain an accessory dwelling unit structure. And we outlined our reasons for that because we did feel that there was not sufficient information being gleaned at these hearings, that it really was more of a consistent generic use regardless of which property it goes upon. And so we did make some further recommendations as part of that to change how we're doing the inspection and annual certifications of it, retaining compliance with our ordinance to address some of those concerns that came forward. So we have enclosed our entire packet and all of our work associated with such over the last three months for your consideration, and we are seeking direction from, from the town council if you'd like us to move this forward to a public hearing process before both bodies.
Okay. We got a recommendation.
Okay. I'll put a motion on the table that we adopt a resolution of intent, 20220317A, for the zoning order and sex amendment to the Central Act 2 Planning Commission with the intention to start public hearings and polishing cannibal.
Second. I move for adoption of resolution of intent, 20220317A, zoning text amendment regarding Section 4.2J accessory dwelling units and Section 2.9 definition. I noticed, and forego the reading of the resolution. Any discussion?
I just want to make a point. I was in the Planning Commission when we went through this whole accessory dwelling. It was like pulling teeth trying to get this passed because no one wanted it. And the whole intent of this accessory dwelling was long-term rentals. The fact that we're struggling right now with short-term, and we're struggling with getting people affordable places, theoretically affordable, instead of a short-term rental price, long-term rental price. And that was the entire intent of this whole thing that's been going on for eight-plus years now. So there are, have been some loopholes, and I'm, you know, owners moving from their primary house to an accessory dwelling during rental, that defeats the purpose of this. So I'm glad I saw that on there. So just having a long history with this, having been here long enough in this town, almost 20 years now, that this is very important if we get this right, so we can spread out short-term rentals. We're getting inundated with short-term rentals, and people complain about it, but then we have the other half that want to rent it out short-term, which is kind of not the direction we wanted this to go. And that's why they tried not to do it for a long time.
Yes, ma'am. Just to ask clarification, we did, at Planning Commission, discuss the owners because we've gone through a slew of other ADUs ordinances, and many of them address the owners as to where they can reside, whether they have to reside on the property and rent out, or have the option to go in either location. We chose right now to leave that direction out, and if there's, if there's something from council you want us further to consider.
Personally, I would consider that, just me. I'm not speaking for everybody else, but that was not the intent of the ADUs, never.
I totally agree with the intent, and I think there have been some loopholes that need to be addressed. The, I don't know what difference it will make, but I have no issue with the 60-day. So I think it's time to tighten it up. I do think we need to be careful in terms of our intent, but also in terms of being overly restrictive. I'm thinking in terms of hardship case. Let's say one spouse dies, and the person needs to move into the accessory dwelling unit and rent out their house to keep there, to be able to maintain the property. I don't think we can, should regulate that these units have to be used for long-term rental. If, I don't want to rent it out at all. I want to have the accessory dwelling unit, and I just want to use it as overflow, I mean, I don't have one, but overflow for my family. It's just a private guesthouse. I don't think the restrictions should apply to that if it's just for my personal use, like one of my bedrooms. I think the comparison across the different localities was extremely helpful, and I suspect a lot of those, you know, some, trying to over-regulate to narrow in on our objectives might be difficult to enforce. I thought what the others had come up with, a lot of them made sense. It might not be ideal, but the idea that you could only rent out one or the other, and you, and that you could only rent out one or the other, the accessory if you were living in the main, I was, I was fine with. But I think we need to carefully look at the others and maybe the thinking that went into those, because I think we just can't have too narrow of view. And I had an issue with, like, some of the definitions. I thought the, the proposed definition for a kitchen of just being someplace for food preparation with a sink and no other criteria was overly wrong.
Overly wrong.
Wrong. I mean, I think, a wet bar is not a kitchen, and a wet bar usually even has a refrigerator. So I think we just need to keep balance.
All right. So, so I'll just say, the Planning Commission is 95% where we are right now with these particular orders. And all the arguments have been brought out on the table and through the Planning Commission consensus, and that's why we wanted to bring it to council, showing you where we've gotten to at this point. And if there's any roadblock, you know, barrier or whatever, now's the time, because once you get into a public hearing, again, Planning Commission will come back with a recommendation. Let's just say that this is their recommendation after public hearing. You'll have to decide ultimately then from there what additional changes would town council then impose.
Can we decide that tonight?
No. All we're doing is formally sending it back to the Planning Commission with the understanding we've been working on this, and now it's our approval for Planning Commission to formally start stepping through the process.
So let me, let me ask you this, just to touch on what Andrew was talking about. So let's just say a situation where the spouse died and he or she needs to move into, is that something they can come back to, the Planning Commission can get us a conditional use permit to do that?
No, right now, the wording would allow an owner to move into an accessory dwelling and deal short-term rental with their house if they feel, feel that's necessary, or long-term rental, it's up to them. But that's the flexibility that's currently in there. We didn't impose anything relative to where and what the owner should be doing.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
Oh, that's all right.
That's okay. In the, I thank you for putting the affidavit piece in. I'm very excited about that because I think it allows that ownership each year for people to state what they're doing. I'm a visual kind of a person, so would there be, you know, like checkboxes of how, what they're using it as? Is that the format of how?
Yes, and, and sorry, we didn't have those finished for tonight's meeting, but they will be ready for the public hearing piece when we get to that. So we have an affidavit form for both consistency and compliance with the zoning ordinance itself on an annual basis, and then we also have an affidavit and safety checklist that we are putting together as well, that the owner would be responsible for doing, submitting to the building, the code official, somewhat substituting for where he is now going out and doing these inspections, we're putting some responsibility on the homeowners to provide that information and still providing us a, an out if the, if the code official still feels the need to go inspect a particular property, we reserve that right as well. So those are a couple of the tweaks that are in here. I can also indicate when you, if this is authorized to go out to public hearing, I will provide greater explanation as to the specific changes that we are proposing in the document and our rationale and arguments that led us to those changes, including like the definition of a kitchen. That was a lot of debate for us, and it came from a very specific purpose because there's a clear conflict between the building code and our zoning code. And from the building code, if it doesn't contain a stove, it's not a kitchen. And that was a real problem for us because he was making some rulings, doesn't meet the definition, doesn't have to do it this way. And zoning was saying, yes, that's, that's a clear accessory dwelling. So we're trying to close the gaps between the two departments as well to avoid those sorts of conflicts and overstepping on each other, so.
And then, how would this work in current ADUs? You know, how does this grandfather forward? Do they then have to do an affidavit each year forward?
No. They would, again, be grandfathered in and be applicable under the old rules. So this is any that are coming forward from a date of adoption if these changes are made.
But if they sell the property.
And if they sell the property, that triggers it to then come into compliance, yes, and follow that. And we do have a pretty good record now of what has been approved here. Yes. We're, we're pretty good. There are still some, some, I still would call grandfathered in, the legal non-conforming ones that just happened, and this wasn't even allowed on the ordinance at all. So we are still trying to close the gap on a couple of those at this point. There probably may be four more that we're aware of that's come to our attention that we're trying to address and at least get them into compliance, because if this is what they're doing, let's at least get them on our list so we're tracking them moving forward, so.
I know there were some, there were some already out there before all of this, before the original even started, so.
And that's, those are the ones I am referring as, the legal non-conforming ones that are still out there, yes.
Any more discussion?
I, I just wanted to add that I, I want us to be sure that we have the right support in place to be able to support the town officials that need to help to actually enforce what everybody's spending their work on.
I think we do, especially by moving some of the onus over to the homeowners with the annual affidavit processes. That helps relieve some, some workload off of us. In addition, moving us away from a conditional use permit process is a tremendous relief of workload in my office. To get to a conditional use permit process all the way through, it takes about a good nine to 10 hours to get the various reports that have to be done along the way. And so these aren't the only conditional use permits that come through our door either. There's quite a few that, that will come through. So anywhere where I can free up 10 hours on one particular application, that would be great.
So in the event that, say, a homeowner didn't complete the form or didn't return it, whose responsibility is it to follow through on that?
That would be a joint enforcement, depending on which forms did not come back in between the building official and myself.
Okay.
Yes. And we're, we're getting much better at how we're doing enforcement jointly, I can say.
I know, I beat a dead horse with this. Is there a way that we cannot make it compliant, but that we could have current accessory dwelling submit an affidavit on how they're using it for our-
Record-keeping?
Records and information? I just feel like there's so many out of the farm, you know, that we have a huge amount.
Sure. One of the pieces that we're putting in place in my department with our, with our zoning code compliance officer is having them take our master database list of all the issued conditional use permits and setting it up on a calendar of going to inspect and ensure continued compliance with the ordinance. So that will still happen with any that have been approved prior to any changes you make to this ordinance. So that piece will not go away. Again, that's always going to be staffing-dependent for this, this community, so I'm not going to say we're always going to do it, but as long as we dedicate staff to ensure compliance with our zoning ordinance, then yes, we're setting up the systems to make that a recurring process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Yes.
Holloway, yes?
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Roseman, yes.
Fulmer, yes.
To be known as unanimous, all right, 7B. Resolution of intent to consider a change to the zoning map within the Commercial 1 C1 zoning district.
So I wanted to give a little background to the staff report because I, I'm not sure if, if the, this community has actually dealt with a conditional rezoning request or have you just primarily handled rezoning requests. So conditional rezoning is authorized by the Code of Virginia, and we are one of, we fall under the authorization of the state code because we are Chesapeake Bay community. We are within that threshold, and that was, that dictates this process. It allows the ability of the petitioner to submit reasonable conditions referred to as proffers. You're going to hear this term a lot over the next few months, governing the use of the property, where the conditions are in addition to or the modification of the regulations provided for any particular zoning districts. And proffers are more specifically defined as an offer by a landowner during the rezoning process to perform an act or donate money, a product, or services to justify the propriety of a proposed rezoning. If the council should find the rezoning and proffers acceptable and you approve them as such, they become part of the zoning ordinance, and they would be legally recorded in the clerk's office in Eastville, so any future purchasers of the property would know that there are conditions on there, and they do become part of our ordinance and would be, hopefully, marked accordingly on our zoning map one day. So with that said, we have received a, a conditional rezoning application from Cape Charles Ventures LLC on March 4th to rezone 238 Randolph Avenue from Residential 1 to Commercial 1 with proffers to limit the commercial activity of said proposed rezoning. We did provide you a map of the area. We tried to show some of the businesses that are along that stretch of Mason because they are somewhat affected and implicated by this consideration. We have provided a resolution for your consideration this evening, and it is to acknowledge and accept that a private property owner has petitioned the town with the filing of a conditional rezoning map amendment application, and that you find the application is complete for further consideration by the town. It is important to know that consideration and approval of this resolution does not constitute approval of any change to the town zoning map. It just identifies that a conditional rezoning map amendment application has been received by the town, that it identifies that sufficient public necessity, convenience, general welfare, good zoning practices exist within the proposed application to conduct a public process that more fully explores the proposed change. And with this said, this will establish that the proposed change does meet these requirements, and you were looking to refer this to the Planning Commission for public hearing in their recommendation. And again, once the Planning Commission holds their public hearing, they will bring their recommendation back as soon as they reach one, return this to the town council for then you to take the vote to schedule the public hearing that you would need to hold and move forward for your final consideration of the matter. I did propose an entire schedule so that you would know what the outside limits of any calendar would be under the Code of Virginia, so the clock actually starts ticking from the moment this goes to the Planning Commission. So if you vote this this evening, it will move to the Planning Commission's agenda on April 5th. From there, that establishes the required 100-day clock unless tonight you take separate action to instruct your staff to send this out to public hearing to, to select a shorter timeframe for public hearing consideration by the Planning Commission to, to forward their recommendation. You have that right to do so, but it now requires a public hearing to shorten the 100-day review time allotted to the Planning Commission. Um, so the clock actually starts ticking from the moment this goes to the Planning Commission. So if you vote this this evening, it will move to the Planning Commission's agenda on April 5th. From there, that establishes the required 100-day clock unless tonight you take separate action to, um, instruct your staff to send this out to public hearing to, to select a shorter timeframe for public hearing consideration by the Planning Commission to, to forward their recommendation. You have that right to do so, but it now requires a public hearing to shorten the 100-day review time allotted to the Planning Commission. And I believe that is part of Mr. Camino's request of what he was trying to convey to you this evening. With that said, assuming the Planning Commission does take the entire 100-day allotment time currently allowed, um, that would put us to July 14th, um, at the absolute outside limit to provide the recommendation back to the town council. Um, from there, I would presume that you would receive it at your next meeting of 7:21 and then authorize staff to advertise your public hearing and then that would happen on August 18th. Um, again, allowing you a full year from when this application was formally started. That is how long you have to take until you need to make a decision on any rezoning that comes before you. All of these calendars can be shortened except for the 4-5-1. That's an absolute, that's, that's the earliest that the Planning Commission can receive this. All of the rest of this could absolutely change based upon how the work flows from the Planning Commission back to you and et cetera, et cetera. But I just wanted to give you the outside calendar, um, consideration. And we have provided a resolution, uh, for your consideration this evening to this effect.
The only thing, the only thing that I would add, Mr. Mayor, um, is that, uh, it would certainly be staff's intent to move this through as quickly as possible. It's not our intent to, to take maximum amount of time. We're just letting you know what the maximum exposure is. Like all business, we will move it through as expeditiously as our resources will allow.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution of intent 2022-0317B of a conditional rezoning map amendment for 238 Randolph Avenue from R1 to C1.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. I move for adoption of resolution of intent, uh, 2022-0317B, conditional rezoning, uh, map amendment application for 238 Randolph Avenue from residential one to commercial one. That's noticed if we'll go to the read and discussion.
The one question I, I would offer that I would prefer a joint town council, planning commission, public hearing.
Yeah, I would encourage you to move this along as quickly as reasonable. Um, and if the joint public hearing helps that process, I'm for that as well.
And I want, I don't know how we need to go about this, but that we can, can we pause sanctions in the interim of the decision-making? Um, is that a feasibility of doing that since this has been used?
Sure, I will say this about, um, the, the violations. At this point, our, our interaction with Mr. Camino has all been verbally informing him of, of the violations occurring on the property. Um, it started back in the fall when these came to our attention. At this point, we have not actually formally even issued a violation notice to him uh, because we did feel potentially through some action that he was going to be proposing to the town in an expansion plan to us, that it might resolve some of these violation issues. They came again when, when he applied for a variance for the Board of Zoning Appeals, which he since has withdrawn that application. Where we did, of course, still note these violations were occurring and, and weren't fully addressed by that application. Um, so I think he is now proposing this particular application before this body, seeking to utilize a greater piece of land that, that yes, has currently had this activity occurring on it for violations. No fines or penalties have been assessed to him. So again, we are still going to write up the violation. We will write it as such that we will, um, lay it aside until this moves through its, its legislative process for consideration. But we have put him on notice that these are violations and they're not going away. And so one way or another, they will need to be resolved, whether through legislative approval of his conduct occurring there or if it should, should not be passed by this community, by this, by the town council, then we will continue our enforcement actions to address that.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just confirm what Katie just said. You know, um, as long as there's a good faith action to, to resolve this, we're, we're not going to be playing hardball. We, we may have to document it, just to document it. And as Katie said, we've been talking about this since last summer or fall, uh, whenever there was
August or September.
Whenever there was thought that, that we were going to resolve this, that we assumed that that was the path we were taking. Only time, the only time we ever brought up the, the concept of a notice, actual notice of violation is when that process stopped for some reason. Then we said, okay, well then we have to do this. But then as soon as it restarted, then we backed off. So, I mean, that, that's, that's the way we've been doing it all along. That's the way we continue, we will continue to do it. And we'll let this process go through its, its, its normal course.
I just want to make sure that the Hotel Cape Charles can continue business as normal through the process. You know, it's not picking one business or another. It's just that the impact that they've made in our community, continue to make, and our need for that, um, as a tourist destination is significant. And this isn't the time of year that we can do anything to, to slow that process down, you know, especially as we're losing lodging kind of options. So, and I think, you know, as Mr. Camino said, you've done a great job in communicating what sometimes isn't fun to communicate, but in a way that's clear and it is what it is. But I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything to hinder them in doing the business as well as these other businesses.
The neighboring businesses as well.
I guess, the one thing I, I gotta, the one thing I've got a question about is, so, uh, I see the 714 is the deadline. Didn't all of that move up, depending on staff?
Sure, and, and I say this because I'm not going to presume I know what comments will be coming forward from public hearing and what consideration the Planning Commission may need to do based upon the comments that come forward. I think so far in the review work I did for the BZA application, we've identified several issues that need to be resolved and, and there are potential ways to resolve them. This is a slightly different flavor application because, um, the matter that went to the, that was scheduled to go to the BZA but was pulled, um, was seeking acquisition of property ancillary to, is that 7 Strawberry Street they were seeking to purchase. Um, so it wasn't quite the same consideration of going behind. And the, the nice thing about their consideration of 7 Strawberry Street for as an expansion area, it's commercially zoned already. Uh, this is a slightly new application request with a different flavor. It's looking to move into the residential zone of, of the community. Um, so there might be other comments that come forward from that public hearing process that we haven't fully considered or vetted and how to potentially address them if we are trying to, to consider this an favorable consideration based upon your comp plan and all your, your governing doctrines. So I did make that statement to Mr. Camino as well. Um, I'm, in my year's tenure here so far with the Planning Commission, I have not seen them look to drag the calendar out beyond what's required. They really are trying to move through things judiciously, so I think they will take that same approach to this as well. I just try and make everyone, this is the outside counter. It could be this long, but again, I have not seen that performance from the Planning Commission.
So, uh, council's, uh, an agreement of, of a joint planning.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, um, no, definitely in agreement on the joint, um, public hearing. And, uh, yes, and I have, especially what we've seen in terms of the track record over the past year, I have every confidence that staff will move this through as quickly as possible. Um, so it does sound like the major concern in terms of timing of Mr. Camino was the possibility of sanctions and the impact that could have on their continued operations. So, um, if we are assured that as long as everyone remains at the table, that risk will not come to fruition, um, then yeah, I'm confident just placing my trust in staff and the Planning Commission that they will resolve this as quickly as feasible.
Uh, any more discussion? Uh, roll call vote?
Buckholz, yes.
Holloway, yes?
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Grossman, yes?
Fulmer, yes.
To be noted unanimous, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay, uh, seven C, Central Park Fountain Modification Contract Amendment.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so, uh, back May of last year, uh, we, um, we had executed a contract for the, the Central Park Fountain renovation project. And that, it was, uh, always designed to be a, a, a partial town project and, and with contractors as, as needed. So a lot of it fell to Public Works to do.
I thought it was Ainsen.
It's trying to take your temperature. You're now allowed to leave.
Thank you, Coach.
So anyway, so there, there was a lot of work that Public Works had to do to make this happen. And, and, and a big chunk of it was the demolition work that was required. And after they got into it, we found some things we weren't expecting. And, um, we didn't, uh, handle it as well as we could have and some additional damage occurred trying to remove it. So we are, uh, we apologize for that. It was, um, we're taking steps to address, you know, process going forward. But the unfortunate part of it is that to, to, to have the contractor come in and, and address the additional concrete necessary is going to make a change order of a little over $16,000. And that added to the original contract puts this over my approval limit, which is why I'm bringing it back to you. That puts us just over the, over the, over the limit. We have the funds to cover it from another project, um, the, um, Mason Avenue Parking Project, which is now not going forward. There is, there's funds available there that we can, that I can move over. So I would humbly request that you, uh, approve this change order.
Make a motion, we authorize amendment to the Excel Paying Contract, the amount of $16,250 for this revised scope of work for the, uh, um, second.
We've got a motion, we've got a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Item D, time priorities.
So every, um, every so often I, I bring to you the, the plate and everything that's on it. Um, so this, this is, nothing here should be, um, uh, of a surprise to you. This is stuff that we've been working on for quite some time.
There's a lot of gravy on that plate.
Um, if, you know, I do my best to try and capture the council's, um, will and priority and that's what I try to put together. So I'm hoping that, that this is close to what you were expecting. Uh, but this is, this is everything that's currently, um, in play or, or what was identified as a need last year that we didn't get to and a rough prioritized order. Clear, upfront is clearly the, the development of the budget and the, and the, um, capital plan, which is huge. And we're, we're in the throes of that right now. The next seven items below it all involve contractors, all involve consultants. We are actively engaged in all of them with other contracts. And that's, there's a huge body of work there that we are currently in, in the midst of and therefore would be very disruptive, disruptive not to continue. But you can kind of draw a line under, you know, underneath the, um, the town office space deficiency study. All of that is work that we've all been talking about for a long time. It's, it's all important work. I've tried to prioritize it there and what I thought might be what you would be interested in. Now, now, let me explain, so it's not like we, I, I do this project and then finish it and go to the next project. All of these are, all of these can be in play, right? I'm just saying that, that if there's priority, if I can only do one thing this hour, I'm going to go to this list and, and go to the one that's of higher priority. So, so we can do things at the lower end of the list. You just need to have the expectation that it's going to take much longer to, to get to those. So with that in mind, um, I would just like to ask your, your thoughts or opinions about, is, did I get everything? Is there anything not on the list that we need to add? Is there something on here that shouldn't be here? And, or is there some movement up or down that you would like to give me direction on?
I'm fine with the priority list that's presented.
And, and Andrew is?
Um, I have first a couple of questions. One, and I know last year we brought in a lot of new processes and changed the way we did things, but since it is now a regular part of our operations, my first question would be, does the first line item actually belong in this list of extra projects?
That's an excellent point.
And my second one would be, and on that one, I actually have an opinion that it doesn't. My second one, I have no opinion, um, because I don't know enough about it. Um, but the options and public discussion on ARPA funding, is that folded in with the first line item at all?
No, it's not. Um, and yes, I, you're, you're right. I, I agree with you. I, I guess the reason that first one is on there is just because that was on the list last year and I started with the last year's list. But I agree, that's a routine operation. That's not a special project. So, so yes, the first one really doesn't belong on this list. We have to do it.
And how urgent is the ARPA?
Uh, we still, we still have over a year to, to commit to it. And then after that, there's a couple more years to actually expend the money. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's coming, I mean, we do have, we do have to have that discussion soon.
That's my, mine, is that I would move it above short-term rental on vote. I just feel like we need to set aside a work session to begin those discussions significantly. Um, I know the other two things are important, but I just feel like the ARPA funding and discussing and strategizing on what that's going to be. I fear that we're going to continue to have other things done that will sneak in and say, well, we could use the ARPA funding and we've not taken the time to really discuss what we're doing. So that's the only one on the list that I would bump up above.
It actually would be tested. It's a good placement, put it before short-term rental.
Is that, is that the consensus of council?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
I had questions. On, on the very last one, the 2022 strategic plan end of year survey, are we talking 2023 or? What, what is the date on that?
I'm just mirroring, again, this is kind of all new because we just started the strategic plan. So I'm just mirroring what we did last year. Last year, we did a, a fall survey at the end of '21. The intent of that was to do an update of the strategic plan in early '22. We did the survey and we, and we decided not to, we didn't need to do the update in early '22. So, so that, but that process needs to be in place again next year, so, so the
So what's the target date rather than 2022?
Well, that's what this, that's why it's at the bottom of the list because it's, it would be at the end of the year, similar to, to last year.
End of the calendar year.
End of the calendar year.
That's what I'm asking, just that's December timeframe.
Yes, yes, yeah, the November, December timeframe, same as it was in '21.
Yeah, calendar year, not budget year.
All right, the, the, the other, um, question I had with regards to shared revenue agreement with the county. You've had discussions with them and they're in the process of finalizing budgets as they go through like we are. Does that need to be moved up and expedited in order to get something done? Or once the budgets are in place, the likelihood is going to be slim?
It, this is not going to happen in this fiscal year. It, it will not hit fiscal year '23 for either budget. It's, it's, it's much too complex than that. I think, uh, the supervisors have not taken an official position on it, but in my discussions with the county administrator and the supervisors I have talked to, I think there is an appetite to, to reach an agreement. The form of that agreement is what's the stumbling block. And it was originally left in a court of the county to come up with some, and, and an idea for us to then look at. I, I don't mean any dis- aspersions, aspersions against them, but I'm saying, I'm saying that it's not, they don't have, they don't have the sense of priority that we do. So, uh, so I've started reaching out to our attorney to, for ideas, but it's, it's very complex and it's going to be time-consuming, so.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. It's not something that's imminent, so where it is, it's fine then?
Okay.
For, for that.
I have something. Um, I think, I don't know where to move it on the list, but I think it should be moved up is the workforce housing and some sort of plan for parking. Because it's, you know, parking is next to the bottom of the list. And I think if we listen to the people who come to these meetings or even feedback that this, this is a kind of low-hanging fruit that if we made some action on, that we could probably win the accolades of some of the residents in town.
Tell me where, tell me where you put it on the list.
I, I, I would be, I, I
Well, parking is
Go ahead.
Well, I just, I think that parking has been, I've heard you say it numerous times, four years and the clock's running, but, and affordable housing is going to prevent us from recruiting people for positions that we have open. Uh, so I don't, I don't know where to put it, but I would not put parking at the bottom and have workforce housing five from the bottom.
I, I, I think all of these are important. All, all is important. I need you to prioritize them for me.
Well, I, I guess I would probably ask about, I mean, in this, I feel a little bit inappropriate asking it, but how much of, uh, there's a lot of consultants on the list that are doing, uh, a portion of the work. So then I'd ask about time requirements and that sort of thing, so how we could partition time out to address some of these other things.
To be a little bit more concrete, um, on prioritization, I would say, just again, based on the feedback we've been getting, um, that with the ARPA as the number one, that two and three should be short-term rentals and parking. And, you know, parking, since we put together this list, it's kind of grown as an issue and it now goes throughout the historic district as an issue of the, um, spread of short-term rentals. So I'm just wondering if it makes sense to combine, you know, develop, update parking plans for the commercial district, vote an RV. And what's not addressed in that list but needs to be included is just residential parking. parking throughout town. Because we're already, we're not even out of March and we're hearing complaints about inability of people to park.
So...
Far from the beach.
Okay, so, so this is good because I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. The reason there's two different items on here is we've been talking about, you know, parking throughout town since before I came here. I, I was, I attended the work session, you know, the town hall meeting before I even took the job on that. That's why it's near the top of this bottom part of the list. That's different from what, this bottom one is what I heard recently when the reverse to reverse was defeated, that there was some sort of plan and program for, for parking downtown and trying to find that work and try to figure out what needed to be done down. And that, that's a whole different project.
The crosswalks and all that work? That, oh, okay, that's...
So, that's...
Very lucky fruits, that's done. Just needs to be adapted, yeah. That's, that's a separate task. I understand now that, what that...
So, that's why, that's, that's why, that's why there's, that's why there's two different items there.
Yeah.
The bottom was required to be right behind the parking behind the library and stuff like that.
Yes, yeah, just, just the, the commercial district parking.
Behind the library would be part of another issue, I think.
I agree.
But the work that's already been done, that was to go in tangent with the...
Except the work that's already been done, I don't have, nor have I been able to find yet, so...
Yeah, but that's, maybe we can do catch-up on that because that's about the crosswalks, the additional handicap spaces.
And I raped him.
Signage.
Um, signage.
I should have that.
Alright, but why would, why wouldn't you consider it a corridor parking wise when somebody said behind the library, that was part of...
It was part of that committee discussion and, you know, the, what we got as far as identifying crosswalks, handicap spaces, and, but, and we had, I believe, in the third, the third phase was the li- addressing the library, behind the library parking as one of the options. One of the things that was in an earlier phase is actually doing the lines, the parallel parking lines on the south side of Mason because it does create an ability to get more cars in when you actually have parking spaces and people don't spread out. It, you know, gives you a couple of spaces.
But the idea behind the library is more complicated. I mean, we're doing this, you know, study of our, our real estate and office space and all that at the moment. That's not unrelated. And I know there are some ideas about parking in our municipal lot. So, I think that, that thinking is not as far along as what has been done, that was part of the plan, that would have been done with the restriping. So, I think there, no decision was reached, for example, on that. So, the things where there is a plan that had some consensus that can be dusted off and quickly implemented because it was the result of a lot of work, that not, the reverse to reverse discussion wasn't just about the reverse to reverse. I think making that work part of this line item, finite, but expanding into new areas can be part of a bigger parking discussion.
Why don't we just address the parking lot we had and address the signs that are in the wrong place? It's pretty simple. We don't, we don't use half, 50% of the parking lot and it's right there.
But I know John has some additional ideas.
Yeah, I was, I was going to talk about that when we got to the CIP part of the budget.
Yeah.
So, I think that's another discussion.
I think if you can leave it where it is, I would pull up the phase parking.
If any of you have any information on the work that's already been done, you can forward it to me, I'd appreciate it. Because, I mean, that's, that's part of my, my problem is just trying to find this information and dig, I mean, I just, that's my time commitment and everything else above it's affected, so...
I mean, it would have been exact information as well as Larry's, but I definitely have it.
Okay.
Send it forward because it was a joint town council, a town staff, Main Street.
Okay, but it did not come to town council for approval as a master plan?
It went to planning, it went to the planning commission.
I don't recall, it had to be before me.
It was before us.
Alright.
It was, but I, I remember it going to planning commission and I fought town council.
I think, I think we were here because I, I just think you would remember Seale saying, you're not touching that tree.
Yeah.
That was, that's library parking.
I'll, I'll pull it out.
I did, I did, I did ask the clerk, I did ask the clerk to do a, to do a search for, for planning commission and council and we couldn't find very much on it at all. So...
Well, it had to go through, the phase like two and three was maybe not approved, but phase one was approved because that's for the reverse.
Well, I'd like to find out where that is. Look at what that plan is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's three phases to it.
But limit it to what there was a actual proposal for. Not that was just out there.
I'm sure there wasn't, we didn't request approval for phase three because we weren't at phase three. It was just not philosophical, this is the direction that the committee recommended. Okay, I'll pull it out when...
Well, I, I've been realistically, I think at some point in time, we all got to sit down and take it forward and we got to figure out all of the parking.
Yes.
Just kind of ever, ever square inch of parking we can find. Right, right on that.
Well, and to me, that's when I look at this.
And that's what I was saying is the broader card.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so at some point in time, I think, you know...
Well, no, and that discussion is actually what I was saying, that and short-term rental should be number two and three in this sort of the, under the line.
Yeah, and Paul's not going like this, but it also has a lot to do with the ADUs too.
But, so I guess it's, I mean, two are related, but it's a bit much divided by one, so I guess it's, which would we want to tackle first? Parking and short-term rentals.
So, we want to move the, develop update parking plan up to...
Well, when you say develop update parking plan, what are you talking about? Because that says in the commercial district.
I think, are you talking about reverse to reverse, the next version?
No, 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 no.
The previous phase thing I was just talking about, it's that, it's that.
To identify if there's any other parking.
On that, I would suggest leaving it where it is until we can dig up the proposal.
And I would, I would take out commercial district, I would say plan for the town. I think the point is...
Historic district at least, yeah.
Exact, exact.
Is the information that you're going to dig up cover the entire town or just the commercial district?
Alright, but then that goes back to what I said about incidental starting.
Then it's a whole different, then it's a whole different project then.
The whole town.
So, so I, I agree with Andrew, I think, I think it should be more holistic. When we get to the point of being able to do it...
It needs to be holistic.
So, then I would say scratch that individual line item and just lump it in as one broad discussion on parking for the whole town and...
And that, that what we have is just a starting point. It's not...
Right. But if we could have one discussion for parking for the whole town, I think that...
I see another consultant in the horizon.
So, I guess it's something you...
There's not so much space available for parking.
But I will say, I do, I do agree with Andy, but just check, flop into signs and up on the other part.
At least to address the near term issue, using the parking lot.
So, just to throw it out there for people who agree, disagree, I would suggest after ARPA, first parking, then short-term rentals.
Yeah.
So, it's parking then short-term rentals? Is that, is that the consensus?
Yes.
Yeah, see, but, alright, yeah. But, I mean, to me, this is okay. The short-term rentals are being addressed also with the ADU stuff. That's what's driving me crazy. Because if you start going into the ADU stuff and let homeowners move in there and we have more short-term rentals...
That is a very small part of the whole short-term rentals.
I know, but it's, it's part of the whole grand scheme of everything. It's a big picture, not just one piece. We got to look at the big picture. That's all I'm saying.
I think it's one that can be...
I know, but we're going, I guess we're going down the rabbit hole, so...
Okay. I think, I think I understand on, on that part of it. Anything, anything else on?
One question on the trail project, is that put aside for now based on funding or?
So...
Dead, dead, because if it's dead, that's...
It's not, it's, it's not dead. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a four-letter word.
Yeah.
So, we got a very unfortunate, alright, we're disappointed in an email we got this week that said, they, they kicked the project back to us and said we have to address all these comments that we didn't know, we didn't comment on. And we have to do that and submit it back to them. It's still in process, but it's got, in fact, that was in my, it was in my comments, under my manager's comments, I was going to talk about this. So, yes, we just found out yesterday, two days ago?
Yeah, yesterday.
So, so now we have to kick all of these comments back to our consultant to address, then they go back to VDOT. So, you know, you're going to see in, when, when I get to present the budget, the Trail Free project is going to be in fiscal year '23. I just don't see us doing it before July 1. And as I told you before, brace yourself, when it comes, when it breaks loose, it's going to break loose whenever it happens. If it happens in the middle of the summer, it happens in the middle of the summer, they will not delay it. If we delay it, we lose the funding. So...
And this latest thing actually works to our advantage.
It, it's pushing things further back and they may, they may give us, they may inadvertently give us a delay we're asking for. I mean, we, we asked them if we could delay it till after Labor Day. They said no.
Is it a 30-day for us to turn that into them, I'm saying something like that, day, 45 days, something like that?
I don't, I don't know, there's a timeframe.
For the notes, for the response. What's the tip of the rule?
They don't care. They, they're enjoying us.
Well, I'm saying, if we can use it to our advantage, it'd be great. You know what I mean?
Well, there's no way, I mean, if we turned in the responses tomorrow, they go through and approve it, they got to send it to the county boarders.
Yeah. Bob, I've noticed your hair's kind of like gray or something.
You just chuckle at them now.
If we can get public works to just block it off on it, I got some white paint, I don't know how to slice it.
I'd be surprised.
The road's fantastic.
I'd be surprised it even gets done, started in '22.
So...
So, does that give you what you need?
I think so. Anybody else have any other input or comment on this list? Is there anything that's not on the list that needs to be? Got enough to do, I might ask you for more. I'm just, alright, so I, this is not an action item, this is, this is just input to me, I have, I have my direction, Mr. Murray.
Alright, can you update this?
I will update this and get it back to you, yes.
Yeah, we kind of messed up Paul's graph tonight.
Kind of messed up what?
His graph sheet. He's got to, he's got to get a copy of that, sorry.
Look at him. You have to read some texts so well.
Alright, Mr. Hosey, you're up.
This is the first time I've seen him turn around.
Okay, so, speaking of VDOT, we've got notice that they will be coming in to do the spring street sweeping on the week of the 21st, so be prepared for that. Also, from VDOT, we got approval for the resolution we did a year ago, I think, on, on the pedestrian warning signs that Ms. Diane Davis requested way back when, by the Heritage Acres, you know, in there. So, the, we had two requests, one was for disability and one was for just pedestrian warning. We wouldn't do the disability one, but we are going to get the pedestrian warning signs. So, those were approved. Want to announce two personnel changes. We've made two hires, we've got a new bookkeeper, Michelle Walsh, and a new police officer, William Lewis. Michelle's already working for us and our new officer will begin on the 21st. Speaking of the ARPA, the ARPA funds, we did get a letter requesting some of it. So, I'm just going to make you aware of it, just because it is addressed to the mayor and the council, from the Eastern Shore Public Library Foundation. And what they are asking for is some of the ARPA money to go towards the Eastern Shore Public Library and Heritage Center. They're asking for $10 per person, per citizen. So, it's not my intention to take action on this unless you tell me to. We can discuss this when we bring the ARPA money forward. I'm sure if it's something you wanted to do, they would take the money whenever you were willing to give it. So, I just wanted, this is addressed to you, I just wanted to make you aware that it came in.
Alright, and I'll just add that they just approached the county during budgets with their particular budget request that covers, I'm not saying it covers what they're asking for here, but it covers their renovation and build up, up north there.
Yeah, this is not just to us. They're asking, they're asking all communities, all communities for this.
No, they're asking for just, you know, a budget line item of X amount of dollars to support their construction efforts in addition to operating expenses. You know, they got the whole laundry list, it's quarter million dollars, it's, it's not insignificant.
Yeah, it's, and again, this letter was, this is not just targeted to us, they're asking all of the communities on Eastern Shore for this same assistance. You'll notice on the announcements, we had, we had penciled in a work session for April 7th and Councilwoman Holloway is not going to be available. And I went to let you know that I will also not be available that evening. So, I would request that we do not have a, a meeting that night. However, we will meet the week before that, the 31st, so, so to March 31st, I penciled that in for, as a work session. And what I would like to cover with you that evening, it's going to be a lot, we're going to go over, ready to present to you the options for the space study evaluation and start getting some feedback on that, on where, what options you think, where we should be going with that. And I also want to give you the first look at the capital projects for the upcoming budget, upcoming budget year. Those are the big pieces that I need to kind of start crafting the rest of the budget around. So, those are the things I would like to cover with you on the 31st of March in the work session. Good news on the DHCD Small Business Recovery Grant for COVID, we got our budget request approved. Everything's done now, so we've got our COIs approved, we've got our budget approved, we've got an extension, just a matter of pushing the paperwork now. So, thanks to Main Street and Karen, who's just doing yeoman's work on that. So, we're, we're looking good there. And then also just found out today, supply chain delay, you, we asked you to lean forward on ARPA and fund money for the breakwater repair in the harbor because we were concerned of continuing degradation. And we just got noticed today of a delay because the pilings are not available. So, they're, they're still looking forward to six weeks out for piling, another few weeks to install. We're hoping to get it done by Memorial Day, but just know that we're working on it as soon as we can, but it's a, it's a supply chain issue.
Are they still got those two pilots?
No, there, there wouldn't pilot.
Why don't we just use, contract base for concrete? It makes the free ones for us, concrete.
It's the, it's the wales of timbers that they can't get. They're six by six with this.
Yeah, boy. I, I'm telling you, I saw the craziest thing last week when it's speaking of supply chain. You drive 64, you're putting in that new rug, once you go, once you get, before you get to that, that roads bridge tunnel, that section, you're putting right there, two things, it caught my eye, that whole stretch that they've made wider there, there's, they're using wood poles in the center of the two things. And then they put the lines above ground, I mean, who builds something nowadays that puts your wires above ground?
Those are temporary.
Temporary, yeah, gotta be. That's what I was thinking, but I was just saying there's...
That stuff's buried now.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So, the last thing I have, Mr. Barris mentioned, I would not, I wasn't going to be available for the meeting on April 7th because I would like to take off on April 7th and 8th, which is a Thursday, Friday, and the following Monday, which is the 11th. So...
And John, just before you totally get off on personnel changes, we're also saying goodbye to a police officer with appreciation?
Uh, yes, I mentioned that last time.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we meet that out.
Yes.
Can I ask a question about the beach?
Yes.
Great job, first of all.
Yeah. Public Works, no, it's all Public Works, yes.
Public Works, I was down there and I, it was just amazing to see in person. I do have a question, however. So when you go in the Tassell entrance and you get on the deck, are they gonna continue to work on so you can get out of the deck?
Yes, yes. They're working on that, they're working on that now.
The shore girl can't climb that hill. I was like.
Actually, yeah, so.
It was carved out, I went by it yesterday or today.
They're, they're working on it, yeah. Yes, yes, yeah, 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 they're working on it now. So, um, I guess, you know, before my time, the core engineers guys came in, put in that original sand fence. And that's kind of where they go back to. Well, that, for whatever reason, that fence got put in, in front of that Tassell platform. So there's all a bunch of sand behind it. The, the, the platform is actually below grade. It's impossible to keep it clean. Every wind just puts, so. So Public Works, um, is gonna remove that part of the fence and get, get that area cleared out in front of it so it can be ma, better maintained. So we'll be doing that. But I, there is something else. I, I didn't write it down here because it happened just this afternoon before I came here. Speaking of the beach and the sand, we, you know, that we were on, um, we were on tap to have first priority for the sand coming out of, um, Kings Creek. But I was notified today that they're gonna do that during the summer season. And I told them, no. There's no way, there's no way we can bring that in nor, I said, there's no, as, beach maintenance does not happen between May one and September thirty. If you can give me sand outside of that window, we can work with it. Um, but I guess they're, they've got some issues with permitting. They can only dredge because of aquaculture or other reasons at certain times of the year. And, and so anyway, bottom line, we may lose access to that sand, is the bad news. The good news is, Public Works proved last week that I don't know that, that we're in that dire need of it. There's a lot of sand on the beach that they just remove. Mother Nature pushes it one way, we push it back. I mean, at low tide, there's sand. There's still an enormous amount of sand in the dunes that, that could be harvested without damaging the intent of the dunes. So I don't think it's, it's a huge issue for us, um, but I just wanted to let you know that we may not be getting the, the, the Kings Creek dredging, dredged sand. I just know way we can do it in the summer.
Yeah. I'm surprised they actually did it. Some of them come Thursday.
Just say, just so you know, those platforms in two thousand five or six, they're off the ground.
Wow. So there's a lot of sand.
They were observation decks, basically.
Bay was one of them.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Palmer, what we're gonna start with here tonight?
Um, I don't have it.
How about? We're gonna skip here, go.
Yankees are looking good. The, um, just house bills that died, one had to do with moving elections back to May, that died in committee. It was close, so it may have some, some legs on it in the future, but right now, gosh, November has our dates for ever until election. The Kipta Beacon, I just want to mention, because we brought that here, workforce, a company is looking to buy it and convert it into apartments. Ran into a barrier with regards to, um, trying to rezone for that. They have, um, overcome, I think, that hurdle by classifying, um, the units as what they call a flexible term rental unit. It's such a term in the county. And it happens to be applicable in this one commercial area. So that if they do call it that, those are long-term rentals, less than one year lease. So a three sixty-four day lease, and then you can renew it. How we got the item?
But it's, but they, the county went to the attorney, the attorney general, to make this happen, to say, let's, let's kinda get some legal advice on it. And it's a by right kind of ability for, which is.
But it doesn't, it doesn't limit you now to short-term rentals, all right? So we'd have to trust that the developer who said he was gonna buy, still buys, I don't know, other hurdles, but, uh.
Right.
So that, that's the latest. Now, last thing I had was, um, just an acknowledgement of our county assessment. Our reassessment, property values within town here have gone through. And, uh, my concern is the county, uh, board of supervisors had issued a, or adopted a revised rate for rate equalization. And it sounds good, meaning that if your assessment goes up, your rate goes down, such that you're, you're limited to no more than one percent increase.
Well, by law.
That's, yeah, by law, but that's at county level. When you really apply it, and I looked at my own property, and let's just say seventy-five percent increase in assessment with the lower rate that they just approved, still brings me into the thirty-seven percent and fifty-four percent range for the two properties I have. So we need to be mindful that people are gonna be hurting here to some degree. We've got a population that is struggling, and if this holds, which it will, people's rates in town here are gonna go up. And they're gonna be really struggling.
But I don't think they're using the equalization.
Yeah, well, they are.
We made a proposal on Tuesday night.
But I believe what, if I read correctly, what they propose will require public hearings and have to be called a rate increase, which means they're not totally equalizing.
No.
Well, they're, they're going above what the equalization rate would be.
Because our assessments are so crazy high compared to the rest of the county. That's why they can't do it.
No, I'm talking about at the county level.
I know that. That's what I'm saying. The county itself, Cape Charles exploded. There was a spillover, but not a lot.
Yes.
The problem is they can't, if they equalize us, taxes are gonna go down.
But they're not equalizing the county.
They're equalizing the county.
But they're not.
Correct, right.
Correct.
They're, but that's the important thing is they're, they're not. They're, they're having, they're calling it an increase and they're having the public hearings because they are going above the, the ban that they can do and just call it equalization.
Well, they called it one percent. They said they're only going up one percent on average, which is still above it probably above.
No, you don't need a public hearing to be safe with it. It's a one percent above. But it is, it is something to be aware of citizens' impact here, and we'll get into our discussions when we talk about the values have reassessed and now will apply to our taxes, and we'll have to look at.
And for our citizens that are listening tonight and for the minutes, it's important to read the back of the assessment that came in because it gives you those dates. It says when you can make public comment and submit your, um, concerns. I think that's April seventeenth. And then there's another, another date that was they adjusted, um, for the actual public hearing. It's later in May now than what's on the back. But I just encourage everybody not to just accept, just, you know, it's important for people to communicate their concerns.
I'm glad we passed this Arbor Day proclamation, because my wife just bought fourteen trees, so we're supporting that whole. That's all for me.
Well, I'm, I'm guessing most people heard the great news, and that is that Elaine Aloria went to bat for North Hampton County and specifically Cape Charles for a two-point-five million dollar, uh, allocation for the Rails to Trails project. So just to bring people back up to speed, years ago, probably two, somebody could correct me if it's more than that. The AAPDC was working on a grant, got it up, all the plans approved by VDOT, and then the AAPDC kind of pulled out and said, "We need to wait a little while." Well, VDOT said, "We're not waiting," and then the money was gone. And so she went to Congress, got it approved, is waiting for the president's signature. And that means that our Rails to Trails project will, rather than five years from now, will start sooner. I don't know what that means logistically. I'm just sharing the news that I know. Um, there were a couple of other things that she, um, we brought her to the shore and really talked about what are some specific needs. And some of it was nine-one-one emergency things, and there's another piece, and I can't remember what it is, I'm sorry. Um, but that's, I mean, just fabulous.
Well, just to, just to add to, um, Aloria, she's looking to pull together contractors and public agencies on housing also.
Yes, that's the other, sorry, that is the other piece of it. So it's just nice to not be ignored, you know, on the Eastern Shore. She really doesn't forget about us. And, I mean, to get two-point-five million, that's not a grant, it's just funded, project is incredible.
A lot of people in town wrote letters and stuff in support of that to her, so thank you for that.
I just wanna congratulate Julie on her first Cape Charles day. I know we all said it to be an email, but what a great day it was. And it was so exciting to see people cleaning up and really working together and just what it's all meant to be, you know? So when you came up with that idea four years ago, it really, to me this year, like, happened. And that's a lot to your effort in making it happen. So thank you so much for doing that. Um, and that is it.
Uh, the only thing I got, I just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a Tammy. I'm gonna beat a dead horse. Basically, if, Paul, when you go through this stuff at the planning commission, taking into consideration the ADUs with what we're trying to maybe accomplish with short-term rentals and kind of trying to keep hold of it, because if we start pushing out these other entities for the ADUs, which wasn't meant in the very beginning to have homeowners move into their outside units. So what I'm, the, the parking we're dealing with, this is all gonna, even if it's a small portion, it's still adding to the pie. So just have them consider really revisiting that, because they're gonna be getting the other portion of it when we start talking about parking, it's gonna go to them too. And some of the other stuff's gonna go to them. So it's like we're putting one in front of the other and it's, any way we look at it, they're all intermixing. So they just have to have a broader idea of the whole pie going on. I think that will help out somewhere along the line. That's all I got.
Okay, uh, me, uh, I, I just, uh, I wanna touch on what Tammy touched on. Uh, thank you very much, Julie, for all your work. And putting up with me for a few events now. We got, we got a couple more coming up. We're not, I'm not done with it yet. But I, I do wanna say, uh, appreciate the Public Works staff, uh, seeing them, I, by, and picking up and, and running around like crazy, uh.
Yeah, we couldn't even start a pile.
So, so, so I, I wanted to, I, I, I really wanted to congratulate the winner of the council member of having the most volunteers. And it really, it was a tie between Tammy and, and Allen here. I couldn't, I could not. The rest of it, the rest of it was just slack. I'm gonna be honest with you.
Paul and I, Paul and I were too busy holding up the park.
That's right. Yeah, dogs to cook.
But, but all, but all in all, I will say this, uh, it was a great turnout. Uh, it was, it was, it was, uh, a lot more people turned out than expected. Uh, so thank you, Tammy, for bringing that idea up and, uh, and we got pretty much done. I mean, man, just like George Steve. I mean, he, he was actually holding a pole up.
There were trees that were breathing a sigh of relief as they got all those suckers off of them. That's great.
But, but, uh, it was, it turned out it was, it was really good. Uh, the hot dogs was very good, as always. Uh, so. Thanks, thanks to everybody.
E plus.
I'm just stepping up my speed out as mayor. Loaded gun, double booked, or Billy Gostruff. That, 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 it depends on which four people it throws together.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's well said.
Uh, I do have, uh, a question, and I, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just bring it up, uh, and I, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, John, because, uh, Mr. Hutchery brought this up earlier. So we're gonna do a budget based on we're keeping the concrete plant, and if, I mean, not the concrete plant, the wastewater sewer plant. Uh, and if we sell it, if it looks like we're gonna sell it, we will amend the budget at that time. That's how that process works.
Absolutely. That's, that's how it works.
So if you're watching after you left, that's how that process works.
Yes.
And also on that, the ARPA money, I don't, that's, that she's speaking of is not the ARPA money, that's the larger ARPA money, right? I think she was speaking of CARES Act maybe money that was used for salaries and.
The CARES Act money's been expended.
Yeah, but she was speaking in.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly which fund she was talking about.
Or hazard pay.
She, she said ARPA, but I, I don't know.
She referred to the list.
Well, even when she made the comment about that, I mean, the wastewater and sewer have their own budget.
Yeah, but we still have to create it.
Yeah.
Right, but it's second from general.
But yes, but yes, I, I am moving forward with the status quo.
Right.
Because that, until you tell me otherwise, that's my world.
What we have is what we got. Yes, it's, it's correct. It's like I tell, we make decisions based on the best information we have at the time. And so if that information changes, we will make another decision.
We'll ma, we'll amend the budget as needed, yes.
That's right. So, uh, what else we got here? Joint work session, March the twenty-second, uh, with Town Council and Planning Commission and Harbor Area Review Board, six P M. Uh, March thirty-first, Town Council Work Session, six-thirty. April the twenty-first, Town Council Regular Meeting. And April to the twenty-second is the fifteenth annual Blessing of the Fleet. With that.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Roll the roll for yes.
Go Brian, yes.
Okay, uh.